They call we get to start?
We're up. We are streaming.
We're streaming. We're streaming.
We're live.
We're live.
Did I get the really loud microphone? Or do I have to eat it? All right, we'd like to welcome everybody here today. It is February 21st, 2023. We are going to begin our board study session and we will start by indicating who's here. Connie, will you start?
Connie Burgess.
Kim Chandler.
Julie Jackson.
Chris Nguyen.
Karen Wender.
Clark Nelson.
And Rich is gonna check in.
Rich Knight.
We are going to begin our board study session and we will start by indicating who's here. Connie, will you start? And we are going to go ahead and get started. We have a consent agenda.
Kim Chandler.
However, the property sale, the sale of property has been removed from the consent agenda, just so you are aware. And Rich is gonna check in.
Rich Knight.
So if there are, are there any questions or I will entertain a motion?
I motion that we approve the consent agenda. Do I need to say minus the property agreement?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the minus of the sale of the property. And a second, are there any questions or dispersions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are going to move on to the main part of our study session. We're so excited to have Sheri and Rick up there. And are looking forward to talking about our dual language immersion program. So we're gonna turn the time over to them.
For President Board, thank you for the opportunity.
Actually, be free. Is this a deal where I like hold my questions and comments to the end? I just wanna set expectations.
I think that would be the best thing, especially considering we have some weather that we're looking at. Let's make sure, write down questions if you have them. And let's see as we get through the slides if we can answer some of those before we get to those. Thank you.
We're happy to scroll back to whatever slide pertains to that question too. Rick Anthony, Assistant Superintendent Educator Support Development. I have Sheri Sorenson with me here as well, who's much more the expert on DLI than I am, but she did give me a few slides. So we'll see who does a better job.
It'll be you.
I just wanted to just introduce or start with a reminder that we're trying to make sure that we're connected to our graduate of Granite and our strategic plan. Have a visual here for you. This is the latest and greatest visual where we have academic proficiency shown in the center around all the other characteristics. By way of reminder, in the strategic plan, we have three priorities. One of those priorities is academics. In there, we have objectives and the objective in action we're speaking to tonight is the objective of personalized competency-based learning and in action of offering specialized classes. Obviously, that's more than DLI, but wanted to connect today's presentation back to the strategic plan. Objectives for tonight is to provide a summary of dual language immersion and also best practices with dual language immersion. We want to give you a summary of dual language immersion in Granite and then describe what we believe and have learned, the benefits are, the challenges are. And then with those challenges, what are some options to perhaps consider? So I'll give this, I'll turn it over to Sheri for the next.
So the state model of dual language immersion was created in 2008 with the passing of Senate Bill 80, the Critical Languages Program. What might be interesting for you all to know is that Granite started dual immersion prior to the state model. We, at the time, had interest from educational equity and our World Language Department to think about doing a dual language immersion. So our first dual language immersion programs in Granite were in 2007 and they were housed at Penn and Vista. So then, which we were just trying to look at models throughout the country and Davis was doing a dual language immersion. There was a few other districts dabbling in it. So Granite really was on the forefront of the state model of dual immersion. And starting in that 2007 with those two programs. We, the state model, Chinese, French, Portuguese, Spanish, and German, and Granite, we do Chinese, French, and Spanish. Roughly half the Utah school districts participate in dual immersion. Spanish is the highest number of dual immersion programs in the state. And really, the goal of a dual immersion program is for students to achieve enough proficiency that they can use that in a future career. Part of that Senate Bill 80 and the legislative body allocating money to that was with an economic lens. How we could support putting forward a workforce that was bilingual and biliterate and the economic benefits of that. So we have a video that was created in our communications that'll just kind of give an overview, is a quick overview of our dual immersion program at the elementary level.
Dual language immersion is a program wherein students learn math, science, and social studies through a second language with the goal of developing bilingualism, academic achievement, and cross-cultural understanding. Here's how it works. A student begins dual language immersion track in first grade. The student has two teachers, a teacher who instructs in English and a teacher who instructs in the target language, either Spanish, French, or Chinese. These two teachers collaborate with each other to support student mastery. In first through third grade, students study math, science, social studies, and literacy in the target language. The other teacher covers all other school subjects in English. In later grade levels, curriculum subjects shift between English and the target language with ultimate goal of increasing proficiency. The student can continue in this dual immersion track through high school graduation. Through this program, students are able to learn the concepts and skills for the subject areas and develop the ability to read, write, speak, and listen in another language. So why do these programs exist? Research has shown that the optimal time to learn another language is during elementary years. Decades of evaluations have shown how immersion programs help students swiftly master a second language. And years of dual immersion programs in Granite School District have shown children who participate in these programs succeed academically. There are 13 elementary schools in Granite School District with dual language immersion programs. Nine Spanish, two Chinese, and two French. These feed into eight junior high schools with dual immersion programs. And six high schools. All students entering first grade can apply for entry into a dual language immersion program. The space available in each program is based on enrollment and may be different at each school. To submit an application, visit www.graniteschools.org. Once on the Granite homepage, scroll down past the search bars to Common Resources and select Dual Immersion. Once on the Dual Immersion page, select "How do I apply for the dual language immersion program?" From here, you can access the application and check finding deadlines. The application period for dual language immersion begins each December for the following school year. If you have additional questions at the program, please call 385-646-4530.
So that provides a really short, good overview of a traditional two-teacher dual immersion model. You'll see later in our presentation, most of our schools are attempting to do the two-teacher model, but there are some variations based on the needs of the school.
I think this one was my side. Yeah? Or am I one ahead?
Did you go one ahead? Okay.
Nope, we're here. So the two-teacher model, Sheri even helped me with this when I questioned her about why two-teacher model, et cetera. She made some great points on environment. So one teacher that's target language, one teacher that's English. And we know elementary classrooms are environments of their own with a lot of teaching aides around the room. So in the language classroom, target language classroom, there's a lot of environment that is in that language. Meaning displays, et cetera. And then in the English side, in English. Materials as well, materials in the target language are all in target language, materials in the English side are split is in English. Instructional time is, the goal is equally split. And we know sometimes, depending on the day, depending on what's going around, or what's going on, you might not have a pure 50/50 split. But the goal is to take away non-instructional time and to balance out instructional time is 50/50 as best as possible. Target language, it's important to note that in the targets language class or the target language teacher, that is the only language spoken. In fact, early on, and it can depend, and I think over time this has changed, but early on with young kids, they might only know that their teacher only speaks the target language and that they don't speak English. That's how rare English is spoken. And obviously, the goal is to not only provide a strong instruction in target language, but also strong instruction in English. We have 12 elementary schools, eight Spanish, two Chinese, two French, as the video said. We, like a lot of school districts, the majority of our DLI schools are Spanish. We have some numbers that we'll show you here coming up, but a rough look at how many students in a DLI school are within that school's boundary? And how many are out of boundary? So aggregate, it varies from school to school, but aggregately across all DLI elementaries, 65% of the students are in that boundary and 35% are coming from outside.
So what are the benefits of dual immersion and why is it important that students have the opportunity to participate in dual immersion? First and foremost, they learn a second language. And as the video indicated, it's much easier to learn a second language at the elementary level than it is as we get older. It becomes more challenging. Another benefit is it really gives students an opportunity to connect with a different culture, diversity. And there's a lot of cognitive benefits that come from learning a second language also. The college credit and future career opportunities are vitally important because that is really going to be important as kids move into college and career readiness to be biliterate. They have opportunities for specialized coursework at the high school level. And teacher, so a benefit of a traditional dual immersion program is the teacher, the English teacher or the language teacher has reduced subject preparation. So they're repeating half of the day twice, if that makes sense. So they'll teach target language literacy, math, it was a lower grade, science or social studies to half the kids in the morning, the other half of the kids in the afternoon. Now that's in a traditional two-teacher model. If it were a one-teacher model or another variation, that would not be the case. But in a traditional dual immersion program, that would be one of the benefits. There's a lot of benefits to multi-language learners, particularly Spanish learners. They're able to continue in dual immersion in their native language, so they're less likely to get behind academically. Because they're able to go right into Spanish math class if they're in the lower grades, continue Spanish literacy, and learn content in Spanish. So it is one of the most effective, and there's research that's clear, it's one of the most effective models for multi-language learners to be in a dual immersion program and get their academics that way. One of the things, we reached out in preparation for this presentation to principals because I wanted their voice of what are the challenges and what are the benefits. So it wasn't just what I thought. We asked them to give us feedback. And one of the things that was really clear in our schools that have two-way programs, a two-way program, I don't know whether we've defined that. So a two-way program is where kids are learning the language two ways. So you've got native Spanish speakers learning English and English speakers learning Spanish. That's what a two-way program is. But one of the things the principals told us about one of the benefits that they really felt, a huge benefit to their school was the Spanish-speaking parents' activity in the classroom in the school. That it was noticeably different in dual immersion schools to other schools they'd been in that didn't have a dual immersion program. Because there was suddenly, with a dual immersion program, there was an avenue for a Spanish-speaking parent to be a volunteer in the classroom or to work tutoring kids or doing those things that parents like to do with their kids. But if your Spanish is your native tongue, you may not be able to do that as easily in a traditional school. So that was one of the things the principals commented on frequently. They also have increased literacy in their native language. A student that comes to the United States speaking Spanish, most likely, if they're not in a dual immersion program, will be bilingual, but they won't be biliterate. They won't be able to read and write perhaps in their native language. By being in a dual immersion program, they have that opportunity to truly be biliterate. And it's just that transition that I already talked about while being able to continue learning academic content.
So jumping into the challenges of the DLI model, when we surveyed principals and what we've heard over time is scheduling and staffing is probably the biggest challenge for schools with DLI. And a lot of that is due to, well, two major things, size of school and then also student attrition. So by student attrition in the program, students will tend to leave the program and there's not in the upper grades, new students to come in. So you start with a higher group or cohort in first grade than you end up having in fifth grade. Class size balance is a challenge for schools with larger class sizes in the lower grades and then it flip-flops a little bit. So that traditional ends up larger later on, where DLI gets smaller later on. We've seen that students who are together for a lot of years can develop communities together. And sometimes that can be a behavior-type community. It's somewhat unique when they're not mixed in classes over the years. Not always, but sometimes. And then in a small school where you have DLI, it's difficult to have that teacher PLC because they're somewhat of a singleton, if you will, or they're the only teacher in that, in that grade level teaching that subject. We wanted to speak to academic achievement here and interestingly, originally, and you can imagine this, there were some concerns that DLI students might perform lower academically because they're learning in a target language rather than in English. But data has shown over time, going back to 2008, that DLI students demonstrate the same or higher levels of performance on end-of-year assessments. Well, and mid-year assessments, both rise and cadence, when compared to traditional students in the same school. So that original concern is not needed. We took a look at some of our cadence data as well, taking a look at traditional, students in the traditional side. And what we found was if a DLI school has two or more traditional classes, there's not much difference than, in terms of cadence performance in reading and math than any other traditional schools. What we did find is when that got smaller, when our N-size got smaller down to a one-class traditional class, we did start to see a difference in student performance or growth in cadence and math to a little bit lower degree in terms of their performance, the smaller that traditional group got.
Rick, can you clarify, are you talking about the DLI students in the DLI school or the overall?
The traditional side.
Oh, the traditional students in the DLI school?
Yep, the non-target lang, students not taking a target language. When there's two or more classes, we didn't see, we took a look at cadence, reading and math last year, last couple of years, and didn't see any difference for those students not doing DLI at a DLI school versus any other students. And then we took a look at, once it got small, down to one, did we see a difference in growth on cadence, reading and math? And we did see that was a little bit lower. I will, I will preface that we would need to take a much deeper dive. This was just a look at cadence and reading and math over the last couple of years. We want to talk about DLI variations and we've dubbed it Granite DLI variations. Quite honestly, I'm not sure to what degree other school districts have had to make some of these variations happen. I'm sure you see it in other school districts and in other schools, but these are solutions that are used to balance classes. So let me give you an orientation to these variations and then I'm gonna show you the side, I'm gonna show you the spreadsheet of schools and DLI numbers. So a one-teacher solution, once a school gets small, this is when, this is always used, not always, this is mostly used when a school is getting smaller and trying to figure out scheduling and staffing. So one solution that's used is a one-teacher solution. This means the teacher teaches both English and target language in a single classroom. Now, when we talk about best practice, students who are in DLI would spend half of their day in the target classroom and then half the day in what I'm calling the English classroom. Once it's small enough, a solution that's used is the DLI teacher. Mornings, we're talking, I'm speaking in target language and we're doing target language, afternoons, English. Another variation is what we're calling a vertical split solution. This is when a teacher teaches two grades in the target language. So they, I'm a DLI Spanish teacher. I teach first grade DLI in the mornings and second grade DLI in the afternoons. That's another variation that's used once a school starts getting small enough. So split classrooms essentially. And then a third variation or solution we want to point out is a regrouping solution. So this is an attempt to have the traditional students and the DLI students while in the traditional English class mix. So students are grouped in their target language for half-day and then outside of that half-day, they might be with their same DLI group or it might be mixed up with the traditional students as well. And as I show these solutions, we can talk through the numbers and hopefully do a better job of explaining how that works. Let me bring up the data. So a couple of different things we wanted to look at in the numbers here is we wanted to just look at student enrollment numbers and this is valid as of first part of last week. Meaning it might vary, a student here or there in one week, that often happens, but it gives you a great sense. So we have each of our DLI schools here and I think we got this to you in a PDF document as well, if you wanted to follow on, but it's projected. Wanted to give you a sense of school size, but also by grade. And the reason why we wanted to do this is two things. One is show how it's, the answer is complicated. The staffing solutions and how a school tries to solve for some of these number issues in their, in their scheduling can vary from school to school. Paired with, we wanted to also give you a sense of is, what percentage of students are in boundaries and out of boundaries? What percentage of students in DLI are in boundaries and out? And then overall, as a school, what percentages are in and out? So just to orient you, I'll, we'll just talk Calvin Smith here. You get a sense of Calvin Smith. I flagged certain cells here that I thought we could talk on as we scroll down that demonstrate how it can be a challenge. You have a school size of 567, percentage of DLI students that are in boundary, 64%, out of boundary, 36%. And if you look at overall, and certainly this is influenced by DLI percentages, but overall, it's very similar. I'll scroll down to one, again, a 576 size, percents in and out, quite close, Grangerell. Here we come to Hillsdale. In Hillsdale, you run up against 26 students in first grade in DLI. So you've got to come up with a solution if they're running a two-teacher model there. That's too small of class size. So then you're solving it with a vertical. So the way Hillsdale is solving first and second grade is if I'm DLI Spanish teacher, in the mornings I teach first grade, in the afternoons I teach second grade. In third grade, they have a one-teacher model, meaning that teacher has 23 students in their class, teaches Spanish in the morning and English to the same students in the afternoon. Just kind of explaining how they're solving for some of this.
And in their fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, do they have two DLI teachers per grade? So those are two classes?
Correct. And fairly small class size.
Compared to, I'm assuming two in the traditional in those grades as well, right?
Correct.
I'll just note here that Hillsdale elected to do a one-teacher model. So it wasn't necessarily, their population, you'll see, is pretty large, but for their community council and what they wanted to do in their school was to just do a one-teacher or vertical teaming. They didn't want larger than that in dual immersion.
And piggybacking on that, we allow schools to solve for this at their level on how they, how they want to solve for this. We don't tell them, you will solve it this way. We advise them and they oftentimes ask for advice around how to solve this. You see a Hillsdale of 594 who's running up against some challenges, but not a Grangerell at 678. And even, even a Diamond Ridge at 567 is alright. So the reason I illustrate that is sometimes you could have a bubble grade or a smaller grade and that creates some challenges. Sometimes you might have two grades that are smaller. So putting a, putting a grand total number on a school isn't necessarily always true to say, well, if you're over 550, you're not gonna have any DLI challenges. That's not necessarily true.
Sheri, so are you saying that in Hillsdale, they, their community council decided that they're going to cap their classes at 23, 24, 26?
Yes.
Oh, so they aren't, they're not aiming for 32 per class?
Right. The, it's, that's just a principal and school choice of, you know, their rationale behind what goals they have in their school and what they're trying to do, so.
Morningside, I've just highlighted a couple really small class sizes on the traditional side, first and second grade. Morningside, again, going back to in and out of boundary gives you a sense. Here's one that in DLI, 48% are in, 52 out. But school overall, 40 are in, 60 are out. And some of that's probably related to ALC as well. Monroe has a few that I've highlighted, just small class sizes in the traditional. And then when you, when you go two-teacher model in fifth grade, that puts a couple of class sizes around the 20 class size numbers. Here we've listed regrouping solution. Sheri, maybe you, I'm not sure I did the best job of explaining regrouping. How you describe is better.
So basically, in those upper grades, they do this at Penn as well, they regroup. So the idea is to eliminate some of those issues they have with kids that have been together for an extended period of time. Also, you know, you probably have heard as we went through the population analysis committees that parents sometimes felt like all the behavior kids were in the traditional or that, or, you know, some other concerns like that. What it allows is those kids are regrouped in the English portion of their day. So there's not one designated English partner teacher. All of the English teachers would be somewhat partner teachers. because the dual immersion kids could be in any of the English teachers' classrooms. So it's just a regrouping for those content areas, which is not uncommon to happen in the upper grades, particularly in elementary. The kids are sometimes regrouped with different teachers.
So let me walk you through a fourth grade, I don't know if this is specifically true of Monroe, but this is how I envision it. With 50 in DLI, we know we have two teachers there, one target language, one traditional or English. And then 33, I'm going to say that's one teacher in traditional. So we have a target language teacher and two traditional. The target language teacher in the morning splits. Half of their class goes to one of the traditional teachers, the other half goes to the other, rather than just straight, us three teachers are there, rather than us two sharing, and Ben just takes one class instead. Ben always is teaching the English side, but the kids that I have are mixed between those two teachers, so it divides the kids up for some time.
And it helps balance those class sizes too, because if the dual immersion traditional class gets large and then in a traditional two-teacher model, that helps alleviate some of that because the English partner teacher, which would be the English partner teacher, takes part of those kids. So it just allows for more balance in class sizes.
Is regrouping making sense? Yeah? Okay. Again, pointing out percentages in and out of boundaries, real close. Penn does some regrouping, Sherry had mentioned Penn as well. Penn's percentages, DLI, in and out, and, and school overall, in and out. Stansberry, we run into some small class sizes in first and second. Again, percentages in and out of boundary. Valley Crest has a few more that are red, just the small class size concerns. Solving for it with a one-teacher model in third and, and fifth as well. Valley Crest has some, has some bigger numbers in terms of in and out. So with DLI, 56% live in boundary, 44 out overall. So it's a little bit higher than what the overall is. So that would lead me to infer that DLI Spanish, having that there at that school, is pulling in more students than, than, than it, what it does overall. Let's scroll through Vista, Spring Lane. We know we had challenges at Spring Lane just due to its overall size, but just to illustrate to you how they were solving for that. Vertical teach, a target language teacher teaching first and second, and then a target language teacher teaching four, five. They were running a .5 teacher in third grade. Looking at attracting students in, DLI were 57% in, 43 out, with an overall school of almost 70% in, 30% out. So DLI was bringing in some students at that school, I would infer. Mill Creek had some challenges as well with staffing and scheduling, that was how they had solved that. So just kind of a summary of the slide that we were talking through, giving you a sense of what the numbers are, what percentages are in and out of boundaries in a school, and then how they're, how it's really being applied, this vertical or one-teacher model or regrouping model. Wanted to highlight, and this isn't new to the board. Granite has some specific challenges with declining enrollment and just general small school concerns. These small school concerns really play into DLI and having to be creative on your staffing solutions. So split-grade level classrooms, we're seeing that with DLI, with vertical. Lack of parental choice on teacher for third grade when there aren't many teachers in third grade. You get a reduced economy of scale when it comes to funding. And then teacher workload distribution, meaning there's still quite a few committees, there's still quite a few, few things that need to be accomplished as a school. And the smaller your staff size, the more extra committee and school-level work teachers have to do. So we looked at four different possible solutions, and none of these will come as a surprise to the board. These are all solutions that have been talked about and floated out there. A DLI-only school solution. And there's been a couple of things mentioned with that. Perhaps the DLI-only school is in one target language, or perhaps a DLI-only school that has multiple target languages. Another solution could be to just continue with the variations that we have. We know we have staffing and scheduling concerns, but an option could be just to continue with that, solving it in the ways that have been, we have been. A third is to supplement FTE to solve for scheduling and staffing. And then a fourth is to consolidate DLI programs. So I want to walk you through each of those and the pros and cons that we came up with for each of those. A DLI-only school, a pro for that was, and, and board members, you might see pros and cons as well as we go through these that maybe we missed, and happy to discuss those. Neighborhood, traditional schools not impacted, meaning the traditional numbers probably stay fairly balanced, at least with two teachers per grade, rather than drop into one. Cons for us, we, we saw a lot of cons, and mostly it's because we haven't seen this model. Nowhere in the state does a model like this.
Well, Logan started this year.
Okay.
It's first, year one for Logan.
Okay. So that and Logan, this year could be an example, example or exemplar of that model. Current DLI proximity options are reduced, so in, in consolidating to just one location, it's all DLI, that does mean there'll need to be some student travel. Attrition isn't necessarily solved in this solution, so as, as students decide, DLI is not for them, the upper grades will get smaller. Transportation becomes an issue. If, if we wanted to supplement transportation, there'd be some expense added for that if we, if we chose to have a DLI-only school. And then we're not sure on a secondary feeder solution with this one. And this isn't a problem per se, but it would be something that we'd have to look at and solve for. Again, no examples or exemplars. If we continued with what we're doing now, which we're calling the Granite Variations, a pro would be no change cost there, continue with what we're doing. It would stay as a community decision. Like Sherry pointed out, the school level are figuring out how to solve for staffing and scheduling problems. A con though is, the same cons we shared with you on the DLI variations. There's just some staffing and scheduling problems with continuing what we're doing. Supplement the FTE, pros and cons. The pro is it resolves the current variation challenges because we're, we're going to just put FTE to that school. The obvious concern is the expense of doing that and the equity around that. Just supplementing DLI where there's other programs that, that could and would like supplementing. Last one is consolidating in a small, in, in small schools, pros and cons of that. Consolidating solves current DLI variations, meaning we get a, a population size that fixes, if you will, some of the challenges we have around staffing and scheduling. Now, I, I just got done saying it's not, all, there still can be bubbles of issues. There still can be grades that might have a, a dilemma. But overall, the, the bigger you get, the economy of scale gets better and bigger, you're able to balance. Consolidating would mean that perhaps the proximity is reduced, but you still can offer that option within a geographical location. Con could be enrollment would decrease in the school where the DLI is discontinued. So if, if there's a, a, a school that's quite small or smaller and DLI was discontinued in that school, what would that then take that school's size to? It would take it very small. So that concludes our, our presentation. Prepare for questions.
So I have a couple of questions. Um, just one, is, are we turning away students from the DLI program at all our schools? Or certain schools? And do you know an amount of students that want to participate that are not able to?
In most of our schools, which I don't, I don't have the numbers, I didn't bring my computer, I should have. In most of our schools, no, we're not turning away, but in some instances, yes. And this year, we only had lotteries in, at Morningside and really just Morningside. And because Penn, Penn had more than they typically would have for applicants, but in order to address that, Penn is going to do four classes of dual immersion next year. So they had 100 and, 110, I believe, applicants for Penn. She's taking 101 of those, and we declined enrollment to any student that was not residing in our district with a sibling in the program. So we had nine out of district applicants to Penn, and they were turned down. Morningside, sometimes, not this year, but sometimes they have to balance, and you saw, you saw the numbers where they have more out of boundary than in boundary. And so occasionally at Morningside, they will have to balance, and there's a few students that, that may go to Morningside that, that don't get in. That was not the case this year, but there was a lottery for the out-of-boundary applicants at Morningside.
Sherry, what, what typically do principals cap their class size at?
Just the, the, generally 60 kids to classes of 30 is the cap. Morningside does do 64 because they have some attrition. If you look there, they had 62, they currently have 62 in first grade. They started with 64, they've had to move. But then they went down to 48 students in second grade. So they've had some students move. One of the downside of having out of boundary is sometimes the parents think it's a great idea, but then the transportation and those things of getting them to the school that's not their neighborhood school is less than ideal. So they choose to discontinue dual immersion. So you can see that's been pretty prevalent at Morningside as you look at their numbers because they always have started with 64 kids in first grade. And it's gone down to the numbers that you see there.
So this is the challenge for, for principals with that lottery system is class size and what, what could that mean? And I probably gamble a little high, but how much do I dare, how high do I dare go in, if they were all to come and what that means for that teacher in terms of their class size?
Oh, another, another example from this year is Vista. Vista will have next year three classes of dual immersion. Because they had 75 applicants this year. Julie Wilson, the principal there, felt like if she took the traditional 60 kids, that she'd be declining 15 kids and have two large first-grade classrooms. So they elected at that school to next year have three smaller dual immersion classes. They get a lot of Spanish-speaking students moving in. So she felt like with the large classrooms, that prohibited them sometimes from being able to put Spanish speakers into the class. So their intent is that they will start with three dual immersion with knowing that that most likely will collapse to a traditional dual immersion model, probably by fourth grade. And then they'll have two classes. But the benefit of that, and I, I think that's a good model, and that's a really good example of, of a school being really thoughtful about how, how they work the dual immersion in their school. They'll have the large class sizes, hopefully, and, and she looked at five years of data, large class sizes in the upper grades rather than the lower grades with that model. So that's what Vista is planning to do for the 23, 24 school year.
Do they only have a one English class on the other side of that, one traditional class?
I, I'm, I'm not sure. I think they will have two, but I can't speak for certain, but I think they'll be, I'm not, I don't know. So sorry, I don't have that. I can get that answer and, and get that information to you.
So I think, my question was mostly like, so in general, we're not turning away tons of kids from our DLI program?
No. No. In fact, most of our dual, dual immersion schools, we've, we've finished the application, the first initial application program, and most of our schools still continue with openings.
And then the only other question, well, I have two questions. One, I went on our website and the West Kearns Spanish gifted, gifted program, what is that? Because it said it's under, listed under DLI, but there's no?
It's not a traditional dual immersion program in that it's not open to enrollment. The students, we started West Kearns the year after we started Penn and Vista. It was in response to, under representation of Hispanic populations in our gifted programs. And so we looked at targeted, where was the largest number of Spanish speakers in our district? And the Kearns network was there. So the students that go to West Kearns are actually tested with gifted testing and targeted to the Kearns network with the, the option to go to West Kearns. As they, it's a one-teacher model, so the teacher is bilingual. And because the class, you know, we, we don't have enough students that we're identifying for that program to have a traditional two-teacher model. We do add kids to that program through our gifted testing. As we test kids and they come up as native Spanish speakers, we offer placement throughout the grade levels for them to go to West Kearns if they choose to do so.
Thank you.
Can I, West Kearns is in my precinct, and this kind of goes back to what you were saying on the earlier slide of parent participation. They actually hold their PTA meetings at West Kearns in Spanish and then translate it into English for those of us who don't speak. And they have such a higher percent of participation from those Hispanic parents who really do have a desire to, to volunteer and to serve and participate in the classes, but that language really becomes a barrier. But knowing that they can walk in the school and participate in PTA and community council as well, and be able to, at the very least, you know, have, have the translation services to understand what's going on and feel like they can, I mean, I was absolutely amazed. I walked in at like five minutes late to the PTA meeting, and no joke, there were 20 people, and I had to kind of scoot a little chair in because of the high participation. And they would stop every once in a while and translate it into English for me and a couple others that were there. But it's just, it ties in to that, kind of that earlier slide you were talking about. Parent participation much increased in that, in that school community.
Okay, and then my last, very last question, I'll be really fast and then I won't ask you. So if this is, so are, are we having any of our schools or communities looking at becoming a DLI school? Are we, is it something that we like advertise that if your school is interested? Or is it just something that if a parent knows about it and they ask about it, then a principal fills that question? How do we vet that, or how does that go?
Well, I, we always tell principals, and we've had principals reach out and say, "We have some interest in being a dual immersion school." I go out and, you know, meet with the staff and the T, the principal, the community council, whatever they want, talk about the benefits and challenges that, that they would experience as a dual immersion school. And so a school would have the option, but I, we haven't had any really pursue it recently, so.
It seems like perhaps the most recent year is there was some talk in the South Salt Lake Moss area of Arabic DLI.
Right.
Uh, this is probably still five years ago, the last talk of, of that.
The short answer that I know is our previous superintendent, Dr. Bates, we were having a hard time filling our current DLI teacher positions. And so I know that Martin kind of just said, "Look, we're, we're just kind of freezing that for now." I don't know that that was ever super official, but there was such a difficulty in, in finding teachers for our existing programs. Also, another thing to make note is sometimes school communities have this misperception that DLI is going to save their school if they have low enrollment. But we have found, and this has already been mentioned, that where DLI is the most successful are high enrollment schools because of the shared workload and the multiple teachers and every, you know, being able to balance those numbers that DLI brings. So those are just a couple of my thoughts regarding that question, Chris.
Yeah, like Karen said, when you, when you look at the data that we had, there's, there's only a couple of schools where DLI percentage of out of boundaries is, is 10%. a couple of schools where DLI percentage of out of boundaries is 10% higher than the school overall. Most are fairly close.
Karen, did you have any questions for them?
Not really a question. I do have, there was a slide, it was way back, you don't have to go back, but the benefits of DLI. And I just felt like there was one little bullet point that should have been, could have been added, yeah, the very bottom. And I wrote in my own slide that we've got to compete. It kind of goes with, you know, the opportunities for specialized courses, but to take that a step further, we kind of are living in a free market education world right now. And if we're not offering some of these specialized courses like DLI, then we are going to continue to have decline enrollment. We have to compete and some of that competition comes through the types of programs that we're, that we're offering because we, you know, the question often comes to us, board members says, why is Granite declining? You know, why are we just barely under 60,000 kids whereas, you know, eight years ago, we were 67,000 kids? And of course, COVID wreaked havoc, we all know that. But I do think that these charters that are popping up and offering specialized programs, even online programs, I think that an important benefit of DLI that we need to keep in the back of our mind is, is it helps us stay competitive as a district for our course offerings. To try to retain the students we currently have and attract those that maybe have stepped, you know, off to a different path and we try to get them back.
Thanks, Karen. I think that is a very important, one of the point that we should keep in mind. Clark, do you have anything?
I have.
Sure. Connie?
My only question, my only thought was...
Will you pull that closer to you, Connie?
Sure.
Eat the microphone.
We are not including DLI with the boundary study, are we, in those schools that we're studying this, this year?
I think including to the degree that we're aware that they are a DLI school and, and knowing the numbers that we're seeing here, percent in boundary and out of boundary. I don't know that it's a, it's a driver. I think overall school size is, is the primary driver, but not excluding DLI from the conversation. It's still a part of the consideration.
I want to thank you for having it in the district. I have grandchildren that have gone through not only this district, but another one. And I, I see the benefit in their lives when they commit to it themselves. And so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Connie. Kim, do you have anything?
I do. I think going back to the attrition conversation a little bit, how much of that attrition is attributed to like specifically kids who are out of boundary versus in boundary? Do we have any data on that? I mean, you mentioned like, yeah, it's harder for parents. Maybe they sign their kid up at first and realize, well, this is harder than I thought it would be. I don't think I can keep doing this. Like, do we know how much of the attrition is specifically related to because it's hard to get there?
I don't have quantitative data prepared. It'd just be anecdotal. I think we see, it'd be tough to separate the two. I think we see some attrition and it's interesting because when you look at the achievement data, I think that one reason a parent would remove a student from DLI is, is feeling like perhaps they're struggling in English side and thus have them just go straight to English. What, that's a little bit counter to the data. We know DLI students perform just as well or better. I don't have hard data on in and out of boundary and the attrition. That would be something we'd have to, we'd have to dig for.
We've attempted to collect that in our department, not very successfully. We've asked schools to notify us when kids leave the program. There's a little form we have that they, we ask them to fill out with the reason why the student is leaving, but we don't always get those returned to us. So it's just speculation, but we, we'd have to survey parents and ask them why they left.
Because I'm also thinking of like, you know, as we go up to the junior highs and the high schools, we have fewer schools and further apart from one another. Wondering if some of the attrition as we get older is attributed to that, that well, you know, I was, I was okay to go this far, but I'm not going to go that far.
I think, I think that happens, you know, the, one of the things that, several years ago, I had to send a letter to ninth graders that had taken the AP test at Eisenhower and had started at Vista. They were our first cohort and I was amazed at the addresses that those letters were going to. And it just dawned on me that parents start when their children are in first grade. Well, you know, if you think about your own experience from when your child entered first, your oldest child entered first grade or kindergarten and you made that decision, a lot of things change in our lives over the years. And it just really struck me how many sacrifices a lot of parents were making to still continue to take their kids to Eisenhower for Spanish. Now, at that time, we were one of the few, well, the only one in Salt Lake County at that point where a ninth grader could get dual immersion. So that probably would not happen now because other districts have programs and they just moved to another district. But, you know, parents move, they become more upwardly mobile during those times, just a lot of things change and that leads to some of the attrition.
I realize there are multiple factors that affect that, but I guess where I'm going with, with my thoughts, probably another anecdotal one as to how many parents don't even apply because, yeah, they, not, not because they don't know, but because...
Travel.
Yeah. They know they're not going to be able to get their kid there, so they don't even apply. They would like it, they would love it, but they can't make it work. And so we don't even, they don't even get on our radar, right?
Right.
I guess where I'm going with that line of thought is like, I think that there's a lot of families who would like for their kids to be learning a second language, but they aren't able to with the current structure.
But travel.
Right? And so I'm wondering why, what holds us back from offering some kind of second language in every school? And maybe before anyone laughs at that question, like, you know, I'm sure there's, there's costs involved and staffing concerns, but that is the way I grew up and I know that it's possible to have that, right? Just every, every school from first to 12th grade, we have a second language. And I'm just curious if we've ever considered that because I really feel like there is, I totally agree, it's a huge benefit to kids throughout their life. It's, it's a competitive advantage. They're going to learn it best at a young age. And if we could offer that to more kids by having it at every school, I feel like it would be extremely beneficial. So that's kind of where I'm going with these questions, like, do we know more of that and, and what's holding us back from doing that?
Can I, can I ask you a question though, Kim? Just out of curiosity, how did they handle, like, when people moved in that hadn't had that language? How do you, how, like where you grew up? Just out of curiosity.
I think it was more standard all over to have, there was actually one required second language that everybody did and then there were options for others. So, yeah. So that would make it easier for sure.
Yeah, scheduling and staffing and then endorsed teachers tend to be our biggest things to point to as to why not to expand. Chinese teachers, I think Karen had mentioned this, a challenge sometimes can be finding the teachers. Chinese tend to be the most difficult. French probably after that. Spanish teachers, not easy, but out of the three, probably the easiest to find.
And I would also just to clarify my question a little bit is not necessarily having a DLI program, like any immersion program at every school, but a second language.
Oh, I see.
Right? As, that's taught, kind of like how our PE and art classes in elementary schools, you would have to do it more often than those, but, but something like that is what I had in mind.
Yeah, just a, just a comment back to that, not, not an excuse or reason, but I will say one challenge we have in elementary is what I would call subject matter real estate. And math and ELA probably taking the most real estate time of the day to be taught and just challenge of elementary fitting in. I think there's 11 subject areas that are on the core curriculum in elementary and that, how much time is spent on each is always, always a challenge.
I hear, I hear that the challenge, but I still think, again, like it's how I grew up. We did the same kind of things. It was possible and I did it for all 12 years of school, a second language. So it's something to think about, maybe. And I had, I guess, well, I'll leave that question for another time. So that's all for me.
Thanks, Kim. Those were great points. Julie?
I wanted to thank you guys for asking principals because I bet they gave some really helpful feedback. I, I really appreciate that you did that and I like being a part of a district that does that. I think that's really huge. So recently, Representative Perucci, I'm not sure if I'm saying her name right, I wish Ben didn't walk out.
I was Perucci.
Yeah, Perucci is how you say her name. She put forth a bill that would basically divorce Utah from the Confucius Institute. And when we were talking about this in JLC, I happened to be sitting, sitting next to Clark who really kind of gave me some perspective on this. And I just did a little digging that I think is important to understand. So apparently in 2014, well, apparently, when we started in 2007, when that first bill was passed, it was about, it was an effort to have critical languages spoken. And the critical languages were Chinese, Arabic, Russian, Farsi, Hindi, and Korean. And so SB 80 was directed at that. And at that time, they created, the state of Utah created a partnership with the Confucius Institute. And then in SB 41, they said, okay, we're going to pilot some programs here. We're going to pilot six Chinese, six Spanish, two French, and one Navajo program in the state. And I don't know which ones we were in on as Granite. But it's interesting to me, and, and then I, as I was looking into this, I found out that actually Utah leads the nation in Mandarin programs, Mandarin dual language immersion programs. And to me, this was really telling because, the reason I think it's important for us to talk about it is because in our Chinese immersion programs, it's important for us to think through, like, where is our demand coming from? Why are these programs here? And they're here because our legislators said this is important for us to have Chinese speakers. It wasn't necessarily because our parents said, we want, you know, we want a bunch of, we want our kids to speak Chinese, although I do think it's hugely beneficial and huge reasons to have your kid do that. But I, I thought that was really, especially as we've been looking at our Chinese immersion program in our last PAC study at Spring Lane. And then our other one, is it Calvin Smith, right? And looking at those numbers and as we watch what happens as that program is in Oakwood, I just want that in the back of our heads, I mean, in the back of our minds. And I wanted to ask Ben, but maybe you know, Dr. and I, has that bill gone through?
Yes, it, it passed, it passed out of the house and...
Sorry, I see you're looking it up.
Yep, no, and it's going to be on a, on a Senate Ed Committee agenda soon. So it's been sent there, but we haven't seen it on the agenda yet, but it did, it did pass the House Ed Committee in the House floor.
Okay. So, so that's just one of our, like, that's a great example of our, one of our complications to finding teachers because they send us teachers. Clark, do you want to speak? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, I don't know if I can speak to the, the precise logistics, but I know there's been a beneficial partnership between the district and specifically Spring Lane Elementary with the Confucius Institute over the years. And one of my daughters was, did benefit from a teacher, an American teacher who was part of the Confucius Institute, but agreed to spend that school year out at a dual immersion school. And that was of great benefit to that, that cohort that he taught. So that's, that's one specific example. There's been many other, I guess what I would broadly characterize as partnering events and activities between the schools, which would apply to Calvin Smith Elementary as well, the junior highs and the high schools of just partnering for events to provide opportunities for the students to be involved in activities, events, collaborating, you know, on different things with that institute, particularly through, and it's through the University of Utah in that regard as well, which is also a significant contributor to the DLI program overall. It's kind of, I think there's some direction that comes to the, to the state, to the districts that comes by way of the University of Utah as well, right? They're the sponsor of the bridge classes and so forth at the high school level.
They're the sponsor of the bridge classes. We, we actually do not have very many teachers now that come from, there was a Hanban partnership with Hanban in, in China and we currently do not have any Hanban teachers. The bulk of our teachers, we do have one teacher on a visa that was currently sponsored by USBE at Spring Lane, who is from China. But primarily our teachers have come from other visa sponsors outside of, of Hanban. We haven't had a Hanban teacher probably in five or six years. Several of our teachers were Hanban teachers that returned to China and then we hired, did their two-year homestay and then we hired them again to come back. So we do have some Chinese teachers that are on 14 or so years of service with Granite District.
And any other thoughts about my diatribe about this?
Well, what I know about, about the bill is currently the funding mechanism for dual immersion has not increased and so the per pupil expenditure has, has gone down considerably because the original amount of money allocated in that languages bill hasn't increased as dual immersion programs have increased exponentially. So the bill that's proposed this year will then increase the funding to help provide more per pupil expenditures for students in dual immersion because right now it's, it's pretty bleak in trying to provide the support. You know, a lot of the language materials in that we purchase are pretty pricey, so...
Yeah, in that SB 80, it says that we receive $6,000 per language, per school. Well, no, that was only for the pilot. $100 per student.
Right. And you don't get $100 per student now. We get it per school, $8,000 for elementary schools and I think it's $4,000, $5,000 per junior high.
And just to clarify, we're, we're actually talking about two different bills. She has the same sponsor, she's got one to increase funding for DLI and one to severitize with the Confucius Institute.
Which we're not benefiting from the Confucius Institute.
That's good to know.
So that will have no impact on our district. We did have two Confucius classrooms, but, but they're no longer in play.
No benefit from a fiscal standpoint, correct?
Right, no benefit from fiscal standpoint, yeah.
There's, there are some, like they have, you can apply for grants through the Confucius Institute and that is where, like, we've done our Chinese New Year at our, at our schools, the Taylorsville Network, through a grant from the Confucius Institute in the past. I don't think we've had a grant for a while though, but that's...
Right.
I would just add that House Bill 161 does have, while it's separating Confucius Institute, it does have a, have a fiscal note as well to increase funding, partly with the University of Utah to help provide what those concurrent enrollment and, or options are, right, for, for us to have the resources we need, so.
Awesome. My second question was about the, our multi-language learners. And Sheri, during the, our last population analysis study, you mentioned to me that, you said that one of the most effective ways to help our multi-language learners is through dual language immersion and that... dual language immersion and that sent me into a whole researching frenzy also. And I see huge benefits. And when we were looking at where to move the Mill Creek program and I was looking in, I was talking with principals at Wilson and Lincoln, well, Lincoln was a different story, but Wilson, the conversation was, look, our Spanish-speaking families don't want it because they want their kids to learn English. And I accepted that and said, oh, okay, well, they don't want it, end of story. And, but now I'm saying to myself, well, wait a minute, we should have shown them the data. If we cared about those kids, we'd show them the data and we'd say, well, wait a minute, let me, I, I see why you think that, but let's give you some education on this and I think you'll, and these schools where we are already kind of doing this, to me, I mean, last week, we showed, I can't remember, we showed that I think only a third, I think it was 34% of our MLLs are, I'm not sure if it was that proficient or what it showed on the, I'm just trying to visualize it on our report card. And that's a third of our students. So I'm not sure why, and, and I recognize this really only pertains to our ELLs that are Spanish-speaking and that that's not the, you know, full group, but it seems like, isn't there something, some way that we could use this to benefit that group while also increasing our enrollment? And maybe we've already attempted that, but could you speak to that?
Well, our, those West Valley area dual immersions, that was the intent within those two-way programs there. As far as parents, that, that's not uncommon because parents just aren't familiar. So one of the things we try to do through the educational things we send out to kindergarten parents is make parents aware of what are the benefits for native Spanish speakers to be in a dual immersion. So it's an education component with the parents, as you mentioned, that, you know, that's certainly something that we support, but we maybe could do better in helping parents understand that. And I lost my train of thought, sorry. But I think it's just helping parents understand the benefits, and this is where we generally come from, is if your child's not in a dual immersion program, they'll be bilingual. They'll be able to have conversational Spanish with, with others, but they're not going to be able to read it and write it and use it in a career as readily without some targeted at-home support from a parent in, you know, having your child come home from school and say, okay, now we're going to read in Spanish, we're going to write in Spanish because we're really looking towards that biliteracy. So I probably didn't answer your question because I lost the train of thought, but...
No, I, it does, and I mean, I think I just want to take it a step further, that it was interesting to me, Dr. and I, that this was not listed as one of our strategies for interventions with our Equity Group last week, or two weeks ago. I, I feel like this is something that maybe we aren't taking advantage of, that we could better take advantage of and not just in the Spanish speaking. In fact, with, when we were talking about Spring Lane, I was getting lots of Chinese families reaching out to me who really benefited from the Chinese immersion program and their, their kids were learning to read and write and they, they felt like it was absolutely crucial for them, right? So, and I think especially knowing that we are, that's one of the things we really want to work on, having identified that as an area of weakness, it feels like there's something about this that we could capitalize on more.
Julie, certainly, certainly more, absolutely. I just, just wanted to point out though, as well, I think we are recognizing that to a level. Could there be more? Yes, perhaps. But of our eight Spanish, you know, the other two are, two Chinese, two French, eight are Spanish. I want to say seven of those are, are on the west side of our, of the valley, in that area, trying to, trying to do what you're describing, offering dual immersion Spanish and native speakers are taking advantage of it.
I really think I'm looking...
But it's not in each school, as you mentioned.
And, and you know where my experience is coming from is South Salt Lake.
Oh.
And I, I feel like that's where we have a hole, but, but also South Salt Lake is not really predominantly Spanish, but it does have a lot of Spanish speakers.
Yep, and, and definitely MLL, a lot of multi-language learners, but South Salt Lake being unique with, with refugee housing, et cetera, being many different languages.
And, and that might be what makes it such that even though Spanish is, is Spanish our number one second language?
In the state, yeah.
I mean, in that area.
In South Salt Lake?
I think it is still in South Salt Lake, but I, I think that might be the thing that keeps us from doing it because it's not, you have these other complications than in the traditional classroom, when you have all these other languages there too and, I don't know, I think it's just more complex than it sounds, right?
Right, as Rick mentioned, we did look at doing Arabic.
Arabic, five, six years ago was one that we were feeling like was spoken a lot in households in South Salt Lake.
Right, so we were looking at, we were looking at MOS for Arabic, the principal was interested, but ultimately, in working through that, the, the movement of the kids, it was just not feasible to sustain a program. She didn't feel like, she looked at the attrition of, of students moving out of the school as, you know, they, they moved through their different refugee services and she just said, I, I just don't see how I can maintain a program. So ultimately decided not to move forward with that.
That was actually a discussion at Wilson too. I've only got like 25% of my kindergarteners are with me in fifth grade, so I don't know how you think you're going to do this.
Well, and that was part of the rationale for, we do have four dual immersion schools in, within a three-mile radius in West Valley. And that was part of the rationale of the, of the principals in those schools when they started, Spanish was to have a two-way program, so they're serving both multi-language learners and English learners. And knowing that most of those parents were moving within that radius so that if a student left Monroe that, and moved over to Stansberry area or Granger area, that there would be a dual immersion program that they could enroll in. But typically, we try to have our schools have the students enrolled as kindergartners. Those schools that have two-way programs, that the enrollment looks really low right now, have learned that there's no reason to have 60 kids enrolled right now because half of them will have moved by the beginning of the school year next year. So they just say, we'll deal with getting our dual immersion classes full in the fall.
Oh, that's interesting. I, I, okay, so you talked about the DLI-only school and what could be complex about that, but I wonder, do we, what kind of demand would we need in order to do that and do we have that demand? And then also, I remember Ben told me about a school in Davis that does that. I don't know if you can speak to it at all.
So I followed up on that and while they considered it, they never implemented.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Yeah, the, as I mentioned earlier, the only school, because I followed up as well, and the only school that has what they're calling a language academy is in Logan School District, very small district, they're busing to any student that wants to participate, they're offering Spanish and Portuguese in that language academy. I was not able to get a response back from their district, whether it's a school within a school model or whether it's a standalone DLI school, but they are busing from all of the other elementary schools in Logan District, but that's like Murray District, you know, it's very small.
But there are charter schools that do it, right?
Yeah, but they're, yeah, they're charter schools.
Just like, yeah, different, but, but can you speak to the demand issue?
Pardon me?
Can you speak to the demand? Like, what demand would we need and, and do we have it?
Yes, so, do we have it's a harder question to answer, but size-wise, we know, ideally four teachers per grade, size-wise would be ideal. So you're looking, you're looking at 600...
You said three teachers?
Four teachers per grade.
Four teachers per grade, yeah, okay.
Is that true also though with a, like a magnet school, a charter?
Where everyone is doing DLI?
You'd have to, you'd have to start large because you'd have to account for attrition. So if you started with saying, oh, we're only going to do, you know, two classes, or yet you, you wouldn't be able to account for attrition, so you'd have to, and actually when we started dual immersion, that's kind of, as we were brainstorming what it would look like, we thought, oh, well, we'll gradually collapse down because you knew there was going to be attrition. So if you were doing a DLI-only school magnet, you would have to have enough initial enrollment that you could collapse and still maintain a robust enough population to have the, have it function because there would be no way you could enter anything but native speakers later past third grade, really.
And, and running a paired teacher model, you're operating in twos, if you will, and so it could be a two teacher per grade, but to have a good size and to, to be able to do some of the other things you'd like to, then you just jump to four. If you do have attrition and go to three or even two, you're, you're running up against staffing and scheduling issues there. So ideally a four, four teacher grade, per grade, which puts you around 600 students, six, a little over six.
I still am going, is this okay? I had some people ask me about secondary schools and they were concerned because there's a lot of attrition once you get to junior high and then again in the high school and I don't know if that's true or not, that's just hearsay.
It's true.
It is true. And one, one of the parents said that they felt like the attrition was due to the fact that that's when they stopped learning content in the target language. And now they're just learning the language in the language. And so students start to drop out because they just would rather do other things. But if they had a social studies class or something like that that was in the target language, that it would encourage them to stay. And I was immediately like, yeah, well, you find that, like, you get the staffing together and I'll support it.
But, well, I can speak to that because I think there's a lot of factors that go into the attrition first. When a student is first enrolled in dual immersion, the parent makes the decision for them. And not every student, once they get into junior high, wants to live with the choices their parents made for them as they were kindergartners. So that, that's part of it. Also, you play into the electives in junior high. A seventh grader has very few electives and if you're a dual immersion student, you choose to put your electives towards dual immersion, that's a factor. As far as the content area originally, which I guess you're lucky I'm old and have a lot of history, originally that was the model we looked at. We were going to have, and if any of you were around at Evergreen, they started at Evergreen and Eisenhower and we had Nick Blight, we had the good fortune to hire Nick Blight, who was a skilled Spanish teacher and also had a history endorsement. So he was teaching history at Evergreen and Eisenhower, but we, the state, and, and we soon recognized that the licensing of teachers that were bilingual and capable of having both the content area and the language was just not feasible for a large-scale model. So that was why, back in the day, that, that the decision was made to continue with, with to move forward with the model. Also, the culture, history, and media class is one of the things that students need to prep for the AP because continuing along the dual immersion pathway, which we really haven't got into the secondary overview, is contingent upon passing that AP test because when they take the bridge courses, they're enrolled in 3,000-level university coursework, which is really high for a high school student, so they have to pass the AP test. So that culture, history, and media class is around those AP themes that they will need for that background because when a ninth grader or 10th grader takes an AP course, that's, that's a challenge for a student that age. So that's the reason for the culture, history, media class. And as far as, and I've heard that a lot too, that they don't like, that they're not learning the content in the language. But really, it's akin to taking an advanced English course. You cannot be successful and continue into advanced academics without learning those components of the language. You've got to learn the, really intensely, the grammar, the writing, and those things. So it's like taking an English class in Spanish or Chinese or French. That's just what it has to be in order to prep for the AP test.
Can I comment on that as well? I just, I, I kind of want to push back a little bit on that to some of the parents. I, and I don't mean this to be overly inflammatory, but I feel like it's a little bit of a cop-out. And, and it, I would chalk it up more to what Sheri says, sometimes kids just become disinterested in, in a decision that was made for them 10 years previously. But I think there is a fair amount of content and social studies that goes into preparing for the AP Chinese exam. For example, I could speak to that one specifically. I would think that the Spanish and the French would be similar. So it, it is not just extreme grammar in those languages, although that's certainly a big component of it, so please correct me if my understanding is incorrect, but there's still a, a significant component to those classes in the eighth and ninth grade, especially in preparing for the AP exam, that deals with culture and other issues that are outside what I would put in the parameters of grammar. So I, I understand where people are coming from, especially from a parent's perspective, that we don't really know the, the details of what's going on in those classes, but my understanding that I've come to is that there is much more culture that's covered and needs to be covered to prepare for the AP exam than maybe we would appreciate ourselves.
And I'll add to, there is a, there's a huge culture part of it as part of the AP exam, so they have to have that culture, but also keeping in mind that, I mean, sorry, in the elementary, the DLI teachers who are teaching the English part of it, they reinforce what is being taught in Chinese and they're trained to do that. So the math terms and the science terms, whichever they're learning, they reinforce those in English. And if you don't get that in English, like, my daughter said this just a few weeks ago, mom, I'm, I'm struggling in science because I don't know the English words to that. I only know them in Chinese. And so she didn't do well on her English, or her, her science assessment because she doesn't know the words. So especially as you get into secondary, they have to know the science word, they have to know the, the history word, they have to understand that as part of that. So having that taught in the target language can be very difficult for, am I wrong in, in saying that? I think that's a, a big part of it as well as you get into secondary.
Right, you know, one of the, the issues that they deal with and how the content is divided in elementary often has to do whether there's even Chinese words to cover the core standards. So that's one of the, you know, tricky things too, so...
Interesting. Would you move to the Granite specific challenges page?
And this one's, this one's just summarizing, you've seen these bullets before, and the small school challenges.
I just, I wanted to add a couple of things. I think one challenge that we have is knowing when it's a community decision and when it's a district decision and, and that we could use some work on defining that and, and also figuring out when are the right moments for district support and when are the right moments for autonomy? And I don't know what that line is and, and we may never get that right, but I, I think that's an important thing for us to list as a challenge because that's something I think we need to solve, regardless of how we end up addressing these issues. And the other thing is... And the other thing is, um, how do we make sure that our traditional classes are okay? Uh, because I think, uh, may, maybe, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems that our DLI classes seem to do okay and seem to survive, and that the issues we're seeing are, are coming from traditional parents who are saying, "My kid is not getting an adequate and fair, equitable, all those words, education because there's this imbalance going on here." And, um, so to me, those are the two main issues. Well, especially the traditional equitable issue. And these four things right here are all effects of that problem, you know? So I'd like to see us really look at those. And when we look at, I appreciate that you came up with a list of solutions. I'm, I'm not seeing the DLI only as a solution. I'm not interested in supplementing FTE personally. Um, but if we look at continuing with our Granite variations and looking at consolidating DLI programs in order to address this issue, I think there still needs to be some other work on the current situation. So if we decided to go in kind of the same current path that we're going, while that's the overall decision, I think there've gotta be some prob, some, uh, details that we've gotta still shift. Because I think we can improve on what we're doing. So even though, even if the decision in the end decides, well, let's continue doing what we're doing, there still can be some tweaking there, I think. And that concludes Julie's entire thing.
I know Karen has a comment. I'd like to follow up on that specifically. So if you want to do so first, that's fine.
I was just gonna say, that is, uh, one of my big concerns you just, uh, mentioned was the English track of DLI. Cause I, you know, when you were going over this slide, and they're doing well, and that's celebrated, and that's great, but I always go to the other side. In fact, correct me if I'm wrong, um, but when we were, our last boundary study, I don't, I think it was in the November meeting when we had a lot of comments against closing. But the one difference was we actually had teachers there asking us, well, telling us of all of the concerns that we have kids in this school. I don't remember, was it Twin Peaks? Or Spring Lane?
Spring Lane of DLI. Spring Lane?
Oh, yeah, would've had to be.
DLI.
The DLI. Anyway, but what really stood out to me is they were, that, here they are, teachers in that school, and they were saying, "We recognize and we see every day that those students on the English track were not getting the, the education they deserve." So I'm, you know, I, I'm with you.
Traditional, English.
Yeah, the, sorry, the traditional track. Anyway, and so I just wanna make sure that, you know, as we continue down this path, that that somehow is addressed. And if we need to revisit this and come up with, you know, different solutions, we can. That was just my own comment, Clark.
Thanks. Uh, I appreciate that this is something that we're, we're assessing, if you will. But I kinda wanna cut to the chase and be pretty blunt here. So what do you recommend we do? You've got your pros and cons that you've effectively presented, and I appreciate those. I would really like to know what you recommend we do at this point.
I think, I think similar to Julie, the, the two that would be on the table in my mind would be, um, continue with the variations. It has its cons. Continue doing what we're doing. That gets more acute the smaller schools get, and especially to Karen's point and to Julie's, once you get down to one traditional slash English class, that starts to get real problematic. So continuing what we're doing is, can continue to work to the degree schools don't, certain schools don't get smaller and smaller. Um, and then, and then the other one would be a consolidation, uh, especially in some of the smaller Spanish schools that we're seeing, Spanish DLI. And we know we have a tight cluster happening there as well. Uh, consolidation would be a, a plan of action in my mind that's, that's, would be the best.
And that may work, or have the potential to work in the Spanish language, because there's eight of them. There are only two Chinese school, elementary schools. There are only two French.
Right.
Immersion schools. So, uh, and, and they're not exactly neighbors.
No, but they're, they're also not exactly real small either. Uh, we've yet to see on the Chinese with Oakwood where that lands, granted. But those ones aren't experiencing quite the scheduling and staffing challenges because they, they have a decent size to them. Now, over time, might that change, but, but as of now, that the school size overall hasn't made that acute where you're down to one traditional class.
So along these same lines, um, there, there is some question that has been raised as to what's the appropriate role of, of the district.
It's to Julie's point.
To Julie's point as well. So I wanna follow up on that a bit. I, I appreciate, you know, I, I think what is the paradigm of our district, which is to, to be decentralized to a large extent and empower our principles. And I, and I believe in that principle with a PLE, um, myself. But I have heard pleas from some the other direction with, with respect to DLI. So I'm kinda curious what your recommendations are there. Do, do those schools require, uh, greater oversight from the district? We, we seem to have had, to have a problem, frankly, in our district with schools becoming out of balance. Um, and, and you can kinda look back in hindsight and see how and why that transpired to become out of balance. Could those imbalances have been prevented by taking, by, by being, um, or ha- having greater oversight? Um, and these are questions, not accusations. I hope you don't take them as that. Um, but I'm really trying to understand and get to the, to the root of, of some of these, I think, important questions.
Yes, yes. So to both you and Julie's point, well, historically, there's been a lot of autonomy with DLI, whether we're gonna have it or not. And even, even problem-solving at their level, where, where we're getting some pleas for help is, is, and where you say oversight, Clark, I, I don't think you're speaking to the quality of the program as much as to these staffing solution issues.
Yeah, I'm speaking specifically to the imbalance.
Right.
Of, of English language learning only versus language learning, target language learning.
And what, what that could look like to, to cut to the chase with you on that, on the consolidation is, once a school sits a certain size, we, and we, these issues get more acute, we say, okay, we need to consolidate with this school. Uh, I did earlier, owning the dilemmas, is it, the challenge of the size is, doesn't necessarily always solve the problems. We saw some five hundred and fifty-sized schools that had it in a grade. So you, you can encounter that. But we also saw in Spring Lane and Mill Creek, once they hit that certain size, the number of staffing solutions that they were having to come up with to solve it. That, that we'd have to certainly interject ourselves in, in creating those guardrails. But I think there is some demand for, for the district to do that.
Can I just ask if, that just, kind of, when you're talking consolidation, I'm wondering, we are, I mean, over the next several years, we're gonna be having just boundary, you know, um, consolidations discussions from just like we did last year. Do those consolidations actually help with this? Even if the school's not DLI, but just having fewer schools boosting populations? Do you see that as?
I, I think so, Karen.
And a part of this?
Mm-hmm. I, I remember being at the Cranger Town Hall a couple months ago, and, and community members brought, brought the cluster of our Spanish DLI up and the size of schools up. And if I, I'll look to Ben, Don's not here, for, I think the next study we're looking at is, we've given certain areas across the district, and that's one of the areas that the boundaries of studies. And I think this will intertwine with DLI.
So it's portions of, uh, two and three, but it's more on the northern end. And, uh, so we're keenly aware of it. Whether the study will ultimately take us to that portion, I don't know.
But I think, I think to your point, Karen, this could, they could intersect.
This is hopefully my last question, Nicole. Um, so I just had a question actually come in during this discussion. So on the, back to the Chinese AP tests that they take and, and these, you know, upper courses, once they hit secondary, is there, like, there are some advantages to AP tests, right? So obviously, you pass it, you get college credit, happier we, but there's a lot of people who, it's a high-stress test, it's, you might have a bad day, you don't pass. So is there any alternative concurrent enrollment Chinese that they could take in place? I know that, you know, like, you have AP English in high school, or you can do concurrent enrollment, or, you know, same with AP Stats, or Calc, or you can do concurrent enrollment. Is there an alternative to the AP Chinese test? Just curious.
There, there's not an alternative to get you to the bridge courses. So if that's the ultimate goal, you have to pass the AP test. But we do have, for instance, Cottonwood High School does offer concurrent enrollment Chinese at the two thousand level through Salt Lake Community College for their students that didn't pass the AP and then go on. Um, Taylorsville does not offer that. They, they chose not to. So it's an individual school thing. Um, the state is, um, starting, or developing three new courses, DLI six, seven, and eight. And that would be a pathway for students to continue their study. So a student typically takes DLI five in ninth grade. They can take the AP test with that. Then if they don't pass the AP test in ninth grade, they take AP of the language in tenth grade. So they have those two consecutive years of language there. So if a student didn't pass the AP test in tenth grade after their second attempt, um, through this new course offerings that USB is coming up with, the students could go on then and take DLI six, seven, and eight. What they're looking at in that course, series of courses, is more of a career focus, um, using the language, um, in, in careers and economics and, and those types of things. So they're just beginning to develop those. And those could, were, were a possible offering, as well as you can do the concurrent enrollment. The problem with concurrent enrollment, or an issue with concurrent enrollment, is most of our students that have been in dual immersion, um, through up to ninth, tenth grade are beyond, um, the concurrent enrollment two thousand levels. And they, and they can only offer twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, but you have to take, you can't take both in the same year, so.
I just wanna give one final comment, if I may, um, and then I'll be done. Thank you. Back to this decentralized versus centralized kind of oversight of, of the programs. My hope is that, um, we take a very significant dive into what, what we need to do as a district. Um, and if there are changes that we need to make, um, whether it's having some guardrails in place such that we don't get to a situation where we have three language learning classes, three target language learning classes, two one, English. I think we have enough, at least anecd, I shouldn't say it that way. There is a lot of, there seems to be a lot of anecdotal evidence that that is not a good situation to be in.
Yeah.
And we seem to be allowing ourselves to get to that point. And so my hope is that out of tonight's discussion and moving forward, that we take some, some action items, um, and some specific steps to analyze what, what we need to do to make sure we have some guardrails in place so that that cannot happen in, in the future, that we get to that point where it's kind of an untenable, uh, situation for the school going forward.
And when we look at the, just the spreadsheet showing your size, we certainly see that in, say, a Spring Lane, in that small, but you can also see where other schools are getting closer and closer to that.
And, um, my comment was actually along the same lines on the flip side of that, which is that I'd like guardrails in place for what happens when you cannot fill the DLI. And when you have, you know, seventeen kids, but an FTE is twenty-seven point two five. You know, I, I would like to, I'd like a process so that we can be transparent and people know what to expect. Um, and, um, I'm not saying I know what the process is. I just want one.
So my two cents, or more than two cents. So I have serious concerns. And I, I, I mean, you guys all know I have kids in DLI, um, and I have appreciated that. And I know that it is a great program for those kids who are involved. I have also had tears, many, many tears over being in this program. So I understand how the attrition works and everything. Um, my concern is for specifically when there is only one traditional class, and especially when that is so imbalanced. And the thing that the, the story that those numbers don't say is that, you know, there's twenty-nine in the DLI and there's thirty in the traditional, but those thirty include a lot of kids that are ELL, a lot of kids that are sped, a lot of kids that are, you know, have other issues that we're, we're working with. And that puts a heavy burden on our traditional teachers that our DLI teachers don't get. I would be interested to see and to know if we have looked into and maybe encourage this, where we have a rotation of our traditional teachers, and I know they don't like that. And I know I'm gonna get phone calls. But, like, we had an, an example of some teachers who are struggling to teach kids who are on a lower reading level because they've never had that, because they have always taught the DLI track.
Been the partner teacher to the...
Yeah, they've always been the partner teacher to the DLI.
Right.
I feel like if every teacher has to rotate through there, we'll have better teachers overall. We shouldn't ever have that problem. We should always, all of our teachers should be able to, to address those problems. And then it would also help, I feel like it would just help overall with the, cause I feel like there's that exclusive club in some of these schools where we have the traditional teachers, and then we have the DLI teachers, and they're, I just, I hate seeing that. I am really interested to see how, cause I've asked about regrouping. I've asked how that works. I've asked, okay, is this, is this a model that we can do everywhere? I would really be interested to see that maybe this would be a better solution in, if we go on our traditional, but to encourage that more because that would balance out those, you know, the twenty-seven versus twenty kids, at least on the English side, at least on the, the other side of it. Again, I know the, the difficulty with that is that it's not always split the same way. You know, it's not the Chinese teacher just teaching math. It's the Chinese teacher teaching Chinese and culture and math. And then the, the, the trad, the English side of it, she's reinforcing the math and then the other side. Somehow, we've gotta figure this out, though, because my, my deepest concern is for those kids in the traditional track, and they're not getting always what they need.
Especially when that gets quite small.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I mean, we've had, even at my kids, the, the first tracks that went through were, um, you know, we had sixteen in the, the sixth grade, and then thirty-five in the traditional one. That's where it's just like, okay, we're not, we're not serving what we need to be serving. So there's that part of it. I remember as we went in, and I don't know if Clark has this memory as well, or any of you, as your kids went in, um, and I'm interested to know, can you have younger kids? So did you hear about these? Did we hear? I, we, it was, it was very well advertised when my children, when my daughter especially was entering in. And you talk about the, um, the openings that we have, the lotteries. And my daughter was in a lottery, and it was, okay, you know, do we have, who, did we get in or not? Um, and it seems like that's not the case anymore. And I recognize that our enrollment overall has dropped, but are we still advertising the same way? And I, along with that, if we're going to continue this and continue on this, maybe that's something that we need to look at better, um, to, at doing better, just overall. Even though we're not centralizing this, we're not, we're not taking over this, but can we help these schools out? Now, I do have a little heartburn because I know that does pull kids out of other schools and other elementaries and creates problems there. But at the same time, if we're going to invest in this program and if we're gonna keep it alive to be part of this, I feel like we need to do a better job at getting that information out. Ben, did you have something?
No, why would you think I? Just kidding. Um, I would, it, for the first time this year during the open enrollment period, we advertised to all incoming kindergarten, first-grade students where our DLI programs were. That's not something we've ever done before. Um, and recognizing that, uh, Larry, about marketing schools against schools, at the same time, we need to shore up these programs. we need to shore up these programs and ensure that people are aware of them at a minimum. So that is something that we have done this year, and we'll look at other opportunities that might exist down the road to continue to educate our families about what options are available within the district.
Thank you. I think that's so important.
I have a quick question. I have a quick question. So what, did you, you say you marketed that on the kindergarten and first-grade enrollment, but only to the schools that actually could take them, right?
Yeah, we actually, all we did...
For all of them.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off there.
No, it's fine.
We posted the information on our website about which schools held which programs. We didn't indicate who had capacity or what. We just kind of let the market kind of dictate where people might have interest, and we simply push that information out to incoming first and kindergarten families.
So that was across the district, then?
Correct.
Thank you.
So if you are in kindergarten right now, you would have gotten that email. If you're in first, first grade, because some of these programs will accept you up until second grade, especially if you already speak the, for instance, if you're a Spanish-speaking family.
Dr. Knight, did you have something?
Yeah, just brief. To that point, while we're looking to generate that interest across the district, it does create a little consternation, as has been alluded to, of the other schools, where they are trying to recruit themselves to come to our school. We've got great programs, we have wonderful teachers, and then they see, well, the school next to us is getting advertisement space. So there, it is a delicate balance. I would suggest for board and for staff, as we've heard your feedback, one is to take a closer look at what decentralized versus centralized look like on this program. Site-based management is how this program really came to be, and that's, I mean, that's the genesis of DLI largely, understanding that there was some approval process to say, "Hey, yeah, you can go down this road." However, go down that road, right? With some support, not absent entirely. However, to the concerns, and that's what we saw exacerbated in this last boundary study, is there's some concerns there. And so what does it look like to find maybe those guardrails? And that's where, if the board in that space would support, we would articulate what some of those guardrails would be around DLI in our schools. At the end of the day, the board has that, that purpose of providing and ensuring in the Granite School District that we have robust, effective programs. And both of those can be defined. And if we see anything that begins to compromise the education a child receives, then it is very appropriate for administration of the district and the board to engage, to troubleshoot that and support our schools in that way. And so while it may feel less decentralized, I would argue that there does come a point, and DLI here is an example, where we ought to, we ought to take a closer look at that and put in some guardrails. Working with the communities to be able to determine how do we shore up perhaps a program that has been compromised at a school, albeit a school-specific choice for that program. Different districts do it in different ways. I'm not going to suggest there's a right or a wrong way. I've worked through consolidation before of DLI programs, and it is emotionally charged because it is a beloved program for all the reasons that have been articulated. However, it came to a point where the program had been compromised at a couple schools, and to consolidate made sense. We didn't do that in a vacuum. It was very much engaging with the community, but it was because we put those guardrails in place to ensure a high-quality educational experience was had, not only for the program, but for those who were affected by the program, per your point, Board President. So if, in terms of action steps, myself and staff are happy to go back, take a look. What are some guardrails that we feel would be in place, work with the principals that are running these programs, identifying what perhaps a better balance would be in terms of what that looks like for support and/or considerations when programs get compromised?
Dr. Knight, there's no, like, DLI policy, right? I wouldn't feel like we needed one. I just was, if we had one, I was like, well, let's take a look at that. And then the other thing is that, I was thinking, Rich, to my, I mean, to my question about, do we have the demand? It sounds like we need to keep an eye on William Penn, because if they have four DLI classes this year, I mean, we got to watch that like a hawk, because that would indicate that possibly there is. Would you agree?
Well, it happens with Penn and Oakwood as well, are two areas to really keep an eye on.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we, I think, as a board, I mean, this has been helpful. We'd like to see some guardrails. We'd like to see a plan coming forward, recognizing that some of these programs are in a kind of a compromised situation, and we need to see things taken care of. Some of that might be taken care of as Spring Lane does go into another school, but I think it's something that we all, we want, we'd like to see something in place so that we can have good, quality, you know, offerings to all the kids, so.
Understood.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you so much. This was really needed.
Thank you. This was tough. We appreciate it. All right. That is the only thing that we have on our agenda, but it was a big thing. So we appreciate you, all the work that you guys do on this and bringing this to our, to our attention. All right, with that...
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All right. We've had a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.